Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting, um, thirtieth of October. We did, uh, Tuesday night. Uh, we did not meet last night as we had no Comcast connection here at the Town Hall. Of course, many of us on other... First on agenda is, uh, to flexible reasons, please join me. I'd like to take up the minutes. Twenty-two October. Item one in the packet. We'll be back. Thank you, Scott. Anybody have corrections? Um, those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero, Captain. Then we have minutes of twenty-four October. This was, uh, who was out? Mark Urenson from that meeting. Okay, Gerald, that was the last page of item one in our packet. All of the motions we approved of. One second. And, uh, those in favor of the motion? I can't say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Thank you. Under announcements, I have one. Um, Locust Hill, trying to put announcements in obstruction on portions of Locust Hill Road. The work started on the twenty-fifth of October and it's expected to last several weeks. Uh, hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, seven to five, seven in the morning to five in the afternoon. And during those periods, uh, the road will be closed to through tra- traffic. Traffic will be detoured onto Page Hill Road. This notice and other similar road projects, uh, and updates are posted on the town's website. Board members.
Uh, first of all, our department heads here, just wanna, you know, thank our department heads for the response to, uh, the recent hurricane. You know, we had some issues on Mass Road last night and, uh, that got taken care of, uh, pretty quickly. A lot of closed roads, things of that nature. And once again, we've dealt with this over the last several years. You know, our police, fire, DPW, all of our departments, uh, lies to the, uh, lies to the occasion and get the job done. I know we've got a lot of residents still without power and it might take a few days. Um, sure, hopefully maybe the police chief, uh... Chief, do you have anything that you wanna add?
Chief, no, I'm on the agenda. But I just wanna, um, thank, uh, one person, keep in mind, did make that, that's pretty, I guess, be on Sunday, like, which is originally scheduled for Halloween, which is tomorrow, but it'll be on Sunday from what, six to eight, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
So... And, uh, the other thing that I heard is that they're going to cancel the parade that was scheduled for tomorrow and that...
That's a school district thing, but a lot of people watch, um, so, that parade. And Chief, that has not been, that's not being rescheduled, right?
That's canceled, okay.
Just one other thing about, uh, you said I think that you... They probably live on their pickup. You're set.
They picked up today, I mean, I know on my Tuesday pickup.
Well, they're on, they're on, we're on schedule, so Wednesday, if you're scheduled for Wednesday, put your barrels out for your normal pickup. We will go into our fourth agenda item and, uh, this is a new chief. This is the title, burden management topic. Would you have an update on storm preparedness and storm act, storming regular actions? I think I'll forego the preparedness since it's here and gone. Um, I'll do a quick briefing, if you don't mind, on, uh, head of state. Um, overall, the town made out fairly well, but we do recognize, says, sixteen thirty to four thirty this afternoon, um, there were still eleven hundred and twenty customers without power here in Gofftown and they were storing them at about fifty or sixty at times, so they're working on that. Um, the schools, it was a Saturday, but we hope, you know, there's how we can, um, we expect rain for tomorrow and the increased traffic, some of the detours were also, uh, that's a factor in making that decision. Currently, there are two town roads that have, uh, full closures and partial closures. There's Tinsen Road that will not be open until tomorrow. Corrida Road, they're working on it as we speak, it should be open by the end of the night. Um, partly the reason they've taken so long, there's wires on trees, et cetera, as the weather appears to be in tenses, or we're just wondering what's going on. And again, because of the concern of downed power lines, trick or treat has been postponed until Sunday night, six to eight. Um, and it also gives, uh, acknowledgement of a police fire and DPW, uh, the, uh, the, uh, crazy last night, so... Any questions, you can grab and answer them. Thank you, Chief. Any comments by the board?
Anybody else checking any...
We're scheduled to have public comment, um, I'm not here for public comment.
No, but, um, Dan, I grew up here today and I was shocked at how good things look and I think that's a kind of, meaning of all the problems you had with drinking for years, but...
We'll bypass that discussion. Is that fine? I'm putting straight that around whole. Want to discuss that more than, don't we? Okay. Town Administration's report, please.
How's your report, please say? We just had a recon and we all would be paying us, um, at six thirty. And that's a folder includes manifest for eighteen months, fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and nine cents, and payroll is a hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars. And we'll have the appointment papers for the appointment you made last week with Peter Hugt as an alternate process. Motion needed.
I'll make that motion to include the consensus folder, second. Motion's denied, consensus accepted, those in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks for having us.
Any discussion? Those in favor, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Captain.
I have a videographer job description and my staff plan, um, that position was changed from outreach person to a videographer. The job description is never done, so you have that before you vote for this next. We've got inputs from the videographer and, um, Chairman of the Cable Committee, uh, the government liaison to the committee.
This, uh, job title comes highly qualified, uh, all that we do. Any discussion on this, uh, title for videographer? Entertain a motion that we accept this job description. I'll make that motion.
I have one, just one question.
Sure.
On the first line on the job description, should the, uh, and that's a question, should the word "of" be inserted between the recording and government?
What aspects of the recording?
I don't know, should, if it's not needed, that's fine with me, I just ask them.
Thank you for the question, uh, um, here's the, okay. Captain, if a favor of the job title for videographer, in case I say aye.
Aye.
Five zero, yeah.
Thank you.
I just have one question to ask. And then, the skills, a part of that?
Mm-hmm.
It talks about a third board driver's license must provide on transportation as multiple towns, sites exist. Um, is there the, the thought that it for mileage would be for that, or not?
Right now, it's provided for here in the high school.
I understand, but there are occasions when...
Yeah, we have done that.
It's, it's definitely a report to the place of duty.
Right.
But that one's covered under the job description anyway, so it's covered elsewhere.
Right, yeah.
Um, the last year's, if you could extend it to ten thirty-one of this year, um, we're recommending one more year. Uh, we've had a few more inquiries, but no one ready and they couldn't coordinate with drawdown already, so we are suggesting that the board extend it one more year. The grant goes, like, it could go seven more years, we would like to close out the grant, so we would, uh, send it one more than that.
Are there any negative ramifications for not closing it, for not closing out and extending it?
No, we, we, probably anticipate closing out next year, uh, and we're getting a bite to discuss with all this stuff, um...
I guess my question is that if we were to, if we, if federal government, if we, for the purpose, and that's, now, I understand your response to, but for the town, there may be no, um, ramifications if we extend it, but I would assume that if it's, if we're holding on to, what is it, a hundred and something thousand?
Hundred and thirty-four thousand, right?
Hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars?
That'll just come back to the project.
We'll go to...
It's always gonna be coming here next year. Uh, I'll, I'll tell you about the meeting we had with us and...
About here, wasn't that?
Uh, I don't know if you noticed in the revenue part, we added some money to this budget. We had additional costs above beyond the grant, uh, for DES, both for EPA, and we can use some of that money to offset those additional costs due to an abatement, um, and settlement assessment and due to additional construction cost initiatives.
Now, my, Mr. Sheriff, is we're, we're to expand our, right, that, or it's, it's not?
Uh, right, so, this was, it was, this was a self-included deadline, um, it was not, had anything to do with the grant.
Okay.
But I guess, um, I thought that we had some class that we, uh, then did, so, and we...
Yes, and we've been doing that as we go along.
That we've been able to recoup them?
Yes.
So by extending, that's what was my, the intent of my question was, by extending it, we are not postponing the recoupment?
Okay. This is extending, yeah, actually, let's, let's order, uh, for supply.
Right.
Any assessment on that really occurring?
A few people have enquired and are interested, but they couldn't coordinate with the drawdown of the lake. So they want it when the water's lowest, when they want to do the work, the water table.
And, uh, following the, seeing global?
Yes.
And how long has it been since we've offered this, three years now?
I have.
I just, I am not gonna be supporting another extension, I think it's time to move to...
Are you supporting this extension though?
Personally, I mean, we take a vote, I probably won't, because I, I think in three years, I think we're getting ample, um, advantage and, okay. Look, that, that money's gonna go somewhere, if it goes to the town or goes back to other people that need it, but if you then, our residents, three years to take advantage of it, we might, I think that's enough.
Well, I make a suggestion, should we make this the final, that? The challenge, having more than two months of, of faith certain?
Uh, I'm, I'm sort of tough for compromising, and this is a one-year extension, it could be six months, so it closes out during the next budget year.
Well, I, I think that try, if I heard you right, if you're doing the down, down, you're done that way. So, we've passed that time, and your point is that we've passed that time, they weren't able to coordinate it, and we would have to extend it to that same time, ask for the drawdown, next drawdown, and that was my point, and, uh, but I under, I understand, I understand the issue. It's been redrawn spring.
Staff, uh, staff recommendation was, um, it goes to November the first, two thousand thirteen. As the final extension. And send out a letter to everyone who hasn't hooked up to it. The grant will be used after.
Still, once the next, drawdown likely took them. Did you typically draw down the button or F, like?
Right now.
And we've had, if someone were to put in an application, deadline, action tonight.
Well...
So, my clarification, the issue is, there's a condition that says it has to be done in the dry, I assume, after drawdown, in the dry.
Well, some of these people are in the, right down there in the water table and they need the right on the water and they, it's easier, it's...
It's water, it's in the surface, it's not in the water table. Because there's a condition attached to, the grant, the fact that it's done in the dry?
No.
Or has to be drawn, or has to be drawn?
No, it's just a contact.
And what's at risk if we commit an evidence?
Then they, these, uh, property owners, uh, here for, property owners without eligible financing assistance and hooking up.
And what's the downside to granting an extension, rather than the fact that we've done it?
Speaking of, it's all done in one more year. What's that?
Not associated with that.
If I ask you, like, after three or four, we are gonna get reimbursed for it, anyway.
But that's, that's, I mean, that's for the town, but it is money that could be used elsewhere, perhaps even for, I mean, it's, it's a federal grant, so if it's back to the federal government, who knows where that money would be spent? Maybe it would go to the, outside of town, maybe, but if that's where, I think we spoke a few years ago.
That's the next part, till two thousand sixteen. So, the grant was, we gotta go then through two thousand sixteen.
Well, given there's no expense, no downside to Gofftown, I'm willing to give them another year to take advantage of this opportunity. I'm in favor of that position, but we need to make it clear that here would be a final.
Final.
If we, if we still go in the favor, then it's final.
Well, we should have a date certain, uh, have, have, when you say the final, but...
Final extension to November first, two thousand thirteen.
Mm-hmm. All right, most regret it. Um, a motion to, what we just discussed. Uh, a motion to, uh, allow an additional year to November first, two thousand thirteen, to take advantage of the, uh, luxury bag. There's a motion, any papers, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Four, one zero. Thank you.
And the final item was election release of selectmen, I emailed you, uh, a segment, I didn't realize you're each getting your own book, or you're getting your own head. Mm, I'm gonna read, I mean, training election Saturday morning at ten AM. So anyone interested in attending, it will be over here in the school courtroom.
Can I know?
Yes. The additional thing these selectmen have this year, the affidavit table.
The table, there's the table.
Yes, um, I, it's usually a bonus stage, uh, while the political campaign, um, I'd encourage you to, uh, volunteer to work at the, uh, challenged affidavit table. And, uh, also to wear your name tag, if you're, uh, if you're not, uh... And the, uh, if you don't attend the, uh, training on Sam Mark as a two-year-old, it would be very disruptive, how the challenged affidavit table work, or on that subject.
Um, I talked to, I think it was Rick, I don't know if it was Rick or Chief Sullivan about, you know, there's a lot of people at the high school and trying to, the way it's set up, trying to get body alphabet with the, with the books along on the building, you know, for us, this crap, I'm getting the right line, so the ability to have some sort of a megaphone or something would be helpful for, I don't know if Rick said he might have one, or Chief, you might have one, if we could use that, I, I, I think, I don't think Bartlet, is that an issue with Bartlet?
No, but I'll comment on, on that matter when you're there, I'll do it. They have come up with a, through, through the app that each, that will have, other people, you see, one or two more lines added to your, to your, your station at the, uh, high school, and I know we're getting one more, I think we're...
You're referring to the alphabet table, the alphabet, yeah.
Because some of the alphabets, um, I know the S's, M and N's, there's either three hundred, better, or sometimes we have sixty, you know, try to battle that equalship of people will be standing in line and not waiting in line any, any longer than, than anyone else is.
Yeah, I think what, what we've experienced at the high school in particular is the line, last presidential election, like, all the way in the high school, outside, right? And you have to try to, because you're going down there, there are usually two or three lanes and then you, that funnels out to, the pipe funnels, what, seven or eight now, where you get to the tables, so trying to get those people to, okay, if you're, you know, L through Z, go to the, you know, keep going all the way down, and just keep on doing that, and doing that speeds it up, so...
In my conversations with the town, first, um, I believe both politicians, two as a, and a door, yeah, there's gonna, there will be an attempt to divide them into three lines. One line will be those who are voting and have an ID ready to present, and they will go straight to the A D C tables. Uh, the next line, the, who are invited to vote, don't have, and they'll be brought to a, a separate table, that could be in a different room. Uh, and the third line will be those who are newly registering to vote, so it's, it's already offering all's help. We did, we did notice at the primary, there were, uh, a number of people who did not have the ID at the primaries, and they were reminded that they ought to bring one at the election.
It's typically selectmen to score the priority stuff, um, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Kathy, but maybe others have. The issue with, um, for folks with disabilities has always, has always really a difficulty had, and, um, although there is, um, there is ADA parking in other high schools, there's only three or four spots, and half temporary parking in front of the high school, and do we know if we're gonna be continuing to do that or not?
Uh, it's true, because there's no tip-down, right?
The reason people enter the high school near the middle of the building is that we're handicapped, especially, I'm sure, and they feed or run along the hall. Chief Sullivan will, uh, check me if I'm wrong here, but the people may, handicapped may disembark their vehicle and, uh, go into the door, but they won't be allowed to wait their vehicle. And much kids that go out there. Just in terms of the fire, um, and the, the building, the fire.
Well, right next to the ADA spots, aren't there a couple visitor ones that convert to ADA?
Unless you post them, they can be.
They do, I, I think that's what they do, also with ADA.
Okay, well, that's a big thing, that is not allowed, but the spaces you're speaking of, uh...
I think they convert the visitor ones right next to the ADA ones to ADA.
In the grass, or... Okay. Yeah.
a number of people who did not have the ID at the primaries and they were reminded that they ought to bring one at the election.
It's typically someone to score the player stuff, um, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Kathy, but maybe others have. The issue with, um, for folks with disabilities has always, has always really a difficulty had and, um, although there is, um, there is A D A parking in other high schools, there's only three or four stops. And have temporary parking in front of the high school. And do we know if we're gonna be continuing to do that or no? The problem because there's no tip down, right?
The reason people enter the high school near the middle of the building is that we're handicapped, especially with, I'm sure, and they feed the red along the hall. Chief Sullivan will, uh, track me if I'm wrong here, but the people may, handicapped may disembark their vehicle and, uh, go into the door, but they won't be allowed to leave their vehicle. And much kids that go out there.
Well, right next to the A D A spots, aren't there a couple visitor ones that convert to A D A?
Unless you post them, they can be.
They do, I, I think that's what they do, also with A D A.
Okay, well, that's a big thing, that is not allowed, but the spaces you're speaking of, uh,
I think they convert the visitor ones right next to the A D A ones to A D A.
In the grass or? Okay. Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know, who's gonna be doing it or you wanna wait till next session?
Move five along and do that. I will. I'm at Bartlett in the afternoon, Mark, you're up there in the morning, the morning.
Yep. I can do the afternoon, Peter, question, doesn't matter.
I'll do the morning at the high school then.
Call it a day. And show?
Well, if you want, I can fill in for somebody who wants, if you need to. If you're here in the morning.
Here's what I think, I mean, I, I've been to both polling places, I mean, Bartlett, and Bartlett will be crazy if it's the presidential election, but the high school, I think it's always a special election, but I mean, had short in the day, that would be helpful. Because you can need somebody at that voter challenge table and I, that's the whole thing, trying to get people in, that's another job.
So I encourage that too, because the, uh, we'll have a, uh, that is the polling locations for second for students and out of physical, remember, uh, is it tonight?
Yeah.
Is it, that, that's a workload on that, one of those three tables, new registering voters.
So I think the more, you know, if, if you can be there, the more that there would be, I didn't know if I was, but who applied, if it was there in the morning, or whether they needed to go out someplace, I could shoot over there, whatever.
Um, they want to call one of us later in the morning.
Do you have each other's cell phones?
Yeah, 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 I could, I could go to the high school if you wanted to go to the high school, I could go to them.
The problem for the school, depending on how the kids are at the college, and I believe the kids have been very well into it this year, and they, they've done all the pre-registering, they've done everything and, and I think they're ahead of the eight ball. And I, I don't suspect any problems with the college students, um, putting into what half the years my life and whatever together to vote.
There's a lot of the supervisor.
Supervisor checklist, yeah, yeah, um, um, they're, they're ahead of the game this year, I believe, so. But I'm hoping, I'm hoping we don't have any issues with state A's, or with the state A's kids. They're pretty good.
Thank you, Bartlett. Discussion on business. Yeah, I have one item. This is one of our, there was a lot of discussion, uh, earlier in the year about trees, uh, burn or, what's the term? What we're kind of concerned was a bull pine that was multi-stemmed at the entrance, it's still there, uh, the plans for remove that, um. I spoke to the tree service company when the smaller diameter trees were being removed, I was there on the site. The diameter removed, that's the trees that were at the toe of the burn. The, uh, one you're speaking of, uh, it's, uh, two trunks, uh, both of them over two feet in diameter. The cutter from the crane, it's a section, now that the, I suspect that probably is not gonna be done. I, and I don't know what the offer, the owner of the dam is doing with, you know, this was a requirement of D E S, to service that burn. But with, I am in the authority, so I still have the keys and operations to remove those trees. And I would suggest there should be some follow-up on that, and that was identified as the highest priority tree, that's the only one left standing. And whose responsibility is it, has it been identified as responsible as a dam owner because it's very close to the beginning of the burn? Possible, how to work on it, transfer, suggest. Because otherwise, who's gonna be on the burden? And what happens if it comes out, who's gonna be responsible for it? Clean up, it is a massive tree.
Who requires them to remove the trees? Guess it's the D A D A, you're right.
The, like the enforcement agency, you know, the owners of the dam indicated the certain amount of trees that have been removed and it's only partially been done. And are you following me up with your oversight?
Does anyone, who's called, who the enforcement agency is?
They're me and the court, I'll have this man in, um, public works out of meeting, this is the owner of the dam. And it's not, there was a maintenance technician, Kevin, to get his last man, he's no longer employed.
That's right, we have a new contract, so.
But I, I have the name of a, which is email community. That's, that's out there and it's gonna be susceptible to blowdown. And then if that happens and it falls on Downstreet, they assume town forces are gonna move in to remove it and so we're gonna go and merge them. That shouldn't happen.
That was one that was flagged, tagged, be.
It's still flagged.
So particularly they had to.
It's identified as priority two on the left.
It would have been done the day that they were cutting all the old trees, but the, the forestry contractor decided that a crane was needed to remove it.
And that doesn't surprise me, I would expect it would be a crane.
All right, all right, well, that's a little bit more reason why he wanted to make sure that it is.
Is that a better, the town could send on the real weather heads, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other old business, only the new business. The situation, uh, our budget is on the twenty budget. We've had quite a lot of discussion on the items in the C I P. And I, I think a lot of them are being funded by fund balance. Through separate articles on the march. But we haven't yet discussed any of the department budgets. We need to spend some time on that, we're not proceeding. Hmm, Scott?
Okay. So do you have a printout of the, of the, of the, maybe you sent it sent out?
No, I don't.
Okay, well, I can maybe just look on, but, um, I'm busy with, you're probably doing stuff right now, but. The, the nineteen percent increase budget, you're.
Yeah. The expenditure side of the budget, um. Looks like seven hundred and thirty seven thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars.
Seven, like seven, um, for that, so they, you have a five percent increase in our evaluation. That's my factor there, what are we looking at in terms of, say, revenues that might?
Revenues are about the same, last year, um, the general fund revenue was for, for nine million and five million this year. Um, I think you have the revenues, write a copy last year.
There should be some fund balance actually.
Fund balance and this one was, uh, C N A C offside, you know, that's it.
Okay, so. The seven hundred and thirty seven thousand dollar increase is above and beyond what we were using for fund balance for.
Seven hundred and thirty seven is a whole operating budget difference.
Okay, but we're putting things as separate articles, that's just a separate.
Right, so those are down below here.
Those are down below and those are offset by revenues from use of fund balance, so we're still working at a seven hundred and thirty seven thousand dollar increase in the operating budget.
They may, they may take them, noticing here. Oh, here it is, no, it's right there, okay, there. So those are separate.
Right, and then in that, obviously, it's retirement, it's salaries, it's health insurance, things, I, I mean, that's a lot of it, but still, that's a rather significant amount. Question is, how does the district think there may be more, a little bit, that is, is it ninety percent do we have the work? Can we, is that not the kind of hope? Yeah.
Retirement was a hundred seventy three thousand, fifty three, with more pieces of a hundred and one thousand.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
One hundred seventy three thousand, four hundred and sixty three dollars.
Yeah.
For retirement. And benefit is a hundred and one thousand, thirty six dollars.
And those are down now.
As increases.
It's a good, it's a, so good for the combination?
Combination.
Okay. So another count, two hundred and seventy four, lost it. That's a, that's a seventy. Thirty seven, lost it.
So, so, uh, one of the, uh, assessments that the town administered it to this last week, uh, we do, compared to nothing further going to, and the cut is, as we have discussed it. The potential tax rate would be just less than eight percent higher, eight, yes, eight percent higher than the rate of two years ago. I was the nine.
And I'm going to end with ten out of ten.
And, so it's a little bit less than eight percent higher than a budget of two years ago. And we, you speak of two years ago because initially we were on the default budget. Of the basics and the, that's for both or two spread.
No, not for me, so.
I may be misusing the word goal, but for an acceptable condition.
Again, I mean, we had, you know, discussions, I, I mean, I know that we're not through, but for school side area, the, on as well. They also have similar issues with respect to retirement, health insurance and things with, things like that, and, um, if, and typically their budget is, you know, twice as large as the, as the town. It might be off by a little bit, but, so they just, we're gonna, five or two dollar increase, we're saying, okay, with a six, seven hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars increase, that is not palatable probably for most of the taxpayers, so. Then we both, no, no, nothing seems to, will be another default situation, so, um, just a question, a road program, one point five million dollars. I just wanna give the voters an opportunity to weigh in on, on some of these things, and Mark mentioned last week, talked about one point five million dollars, I heard people say one million dollars, I mean, did some of, you know, I know it's a, it's a C I P like item, but it's the majority of the money, you know, so, so we kind of think about that. Now, so do you have a number for what would be C I P related items that are in the operating budget that we could not separate out using fund balance? What, what would that number? Separate it out for, for things?
Your C I P is one point seven.
Almost one point eight, right, is that what it says?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's an increase of four hundred and fifty five thousand over last year.
Okay, so, then thanks for, I'll be talking, you know, what do we wanna do with our road program? Do we want to, um, I know there was reluctance, I know, I heard at least one member say, I do not wanna put this as a special article again, it's too important, it really needs to be in the budget, et cetera, et cetera. I respect that, um, however, voters then, you know, they're looking for the road, they're not gonna, I mean, we can, we can put a million dollars in and then we can say, you wanna spend another half million dollars on, on roads and you're giving them some sort of a choice, but at least then you're presenting a budget that's only than two hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars more than last year's and then decide then, they, they want access to make some more. Again, I'm not, I'm just glossing up as a, as a, as a solution, because, do I think we need to go through department by department and have some discussions most certainly? But you have some departments in here where they have negligible budget increases, you know, with one department, two points something, which I think, I don't think that there is a kind of room to be.
Let me, I wanna move the, the road plan discussion.
Okay.
I don't want, either we, we make decisions to, to do something about that pretty quickly so we can move on, or, you know, we anticipate that there's no changes appropriate this time, so we can get on to other subjects. So for the last three weeks, the group, my, my position is we leave it at the million and a half, we leave it in part of the, uh, the budget and it doesn't appear any special, any, uh, articles. We, it needs to be part of this to regular operating budget, we gave it up there, it's a, it's a seven. I'd rather see it all on, all where it belongs, special articles, and, and we've all already acknowledged in previous discussions of this board, that road plan, if we were being truly responsive to the infrastructure needs of taking care of the road, to be at three to two million dollars here. And that, I've done, done that quite a few years in a row. Setting at one and a half million is still less than should be. Any other?
You know, my point, I'm going for the one million dollars, I'm sorry, I, I mean, I think the one million will work, and, and with, with concessions and nothing working. My point, with six, five hundred thousand, uh, stay at the one million dollars, that's right. And that's, I've said three weeks in a row.
I'm probably being aware of this.
I'm allowing the audacity to say that.
I'll make a motion that we take the road plan, remove five hundred thousand, make it a one million dollar.
Mr. Allen, sorry.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna remove five hundred thousand out of the one point five we have in there now, and we're gonna take and make it a one million dollar.
Turn that as part of the operating budget or as part of?
Okay.
And currently it's in the operating budget for a million and a half.
Correct.
The motion would reduce that to one million, I've already expressed my thoughts that one and a half is, that's a little over, you're out.
I'm perfectly happy with it, we can leave it at one point five million dollars and let the people in town make the decision and, I mean, then we can, we can go back and, I'm looking at one million dollars.
That's my motion. And the department head recommendation was two point five million, right?
I'm, I mean, I reluctantly, I'm not gonna support it, but I, I think in practical terms, there's a lot of things that we're trying to accomplish. And, um, I think it should, I think our road pro- program should minimally be funded at one point five, and I've said that before, but, you know, open the door if we wanna put another special article that makes it a less of funding, maybe, maybe not, but I don't put it in our budget, it's something more than what we're, last year. And lighter the fact that, you know, a lot of these costs have been, you know, shifted to us, that's fine, the voters, they may, they may not care how that, I mean, I know we do, but the average person, you know, they may not know, but we have to, we can't just say we're gonna spend another, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars at that long, that doesn't even potentially be on the school side, have a game, you know. Uh, we, I know we've got needs, I know our roads, you know, need to work desperately, but, uh, I have to, a million is better than the five hundred thousand that we have now, and I think if I had to, I would try to do slowly and incrementally get it to where it needs to be over the next four or five years, but not straight.
I did have a on the road plan, but last week the board had reached out, the department has been asked a question during the meeting, is there anything that you can buy that's in your budget next year, this year? And did you want to get the response to that before voting on this motion? From the department of, I don't.
I think potentially purchase would, should still look at lessening of purchases next year.
No, because that's where I was going next. I mean, talk to you guys, I mean, I, I, I stand, and then we'll move on to heads next.
Yeah, but just take the vote. We can always vote again.
Sillyness.
I don't think, I don't think the department has gonna come back to us, so.
One of, one of, one of the issues, okay, I understand, since, and, see, both of these positions. The difficulty that I have with reducing and saying we're gonna catch up. If you just mathematically take the numbers of where the road plan should be at, that font, and we use it down to the one. Every year that you go out to try to catch up, how much are you gonna add because every year you keep going further away? And the catch up becomes mathematically impossible unless you make one year that's gonna be three or four hundred percent to catch up. And that is gonna be our number.
Closing. We're at that point now with C I P, so we've pushed all these items in C I P out so far, the snowball has, the snowball effect has, I think, come full circle this year. I mean, whether it be the road plan or C I P, I mean, we're, we're in that dilemma no matter wherever we look, I believe, right now, and, I mean.
Very valid, though.
I, I mean, we're looking how often, how many years back have we pushed things back, 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 back? Now the, the pieces of pie is so big to recuperate from, we're never gonna be able to get that back, and we're, I mean, whether it be roads, whether it be fire, police, whatever, I mean, we're, we're highway, we're at that, we're at that situation now.
I'm gonna move forward.
Yeah, I, I agree with your point, but.
I have to ask for comments. I, as an engineer, I understand the ramifications of deferred maintenance, the longer we put off maintenance on a road, the more it's gonna cost us in the future, same issue as it relates to the stone box covered on the rail trail. You can deal with it now, a third dollar note, deal with it at most like five dollars, anything holds true, I look at public safety as the number one issue that we need to address. You wanna fire, uh, our police, you know, you know. Next, to me, the next priority is our infrastructure, and that primarily is our road network. I think that's where we need to be looking, but to take action on the road plan without, without, I think separately of the million dollars from the, and I don't know how we're gonna deal with that, and to take action on the road plan without taking that into consideration is short sighted, and I don't think we should be unfortunate that way. Regardless of whether or not we bond the fire department's request or we pay for, and some other means, we need to look at this thing as a whole. We haven't addressed that, and that's, that's, talking about both, one and a half, and then look at that first, and I'm not prepared to take action, vote on the road plan without looking at what we're gonna do with the fire department's request, which, you know, I mean, all our upgrades of the fire station infrastructure. We're gonna momentarily vote on the motion, uh, and, uh, I'd next continue with arguments of a budget, including that fire station burn. And when all those decisions have been discussed and voted on, we can still come back and review the road plan, 'cause at that point, we'll know that the relationships of all the money is going into the budget. So, also, to use the road being operated by our spouses favor, you can, just hang on.
Hi.
Those opposed?
No.
And they hear, motion fails. Three, uh, excuse me, two, three, now.
Mr. Karen, I just got that with the commitment, the budget was, you can overstep, you agreed for implanting, so this was your last scheduled meeting to include in the budget, unless you wanna call another meeting before next week?
The office will kick in now, uh, thank you. Let's go into, uh, any departmental issues to like to discuss.
Open up, I'm just, I'm gonna take a take this year, I'll post next year.
Good evening. Wish I could tell you I had a half million dollars, but I don't. However, um, right, that's a budget I've seen since I've been here. Uh, in our bridge repair line, we had an additional thirty seven thousand dollars for sliding an invert in, uh, under the master over down by Pizza Hut. Um, I also appear with you in down in the city, the original, there was some discussion with C I P, as with C I P or as a maintenance. We opted for us put it in the operating budget to treat as maintenance, however, if it was to be cut next year, um, it is still in the C I P matrix for a couple of years out. Looking at roads and the work coming with the department, uh, they, they're in our hands, you know, and, uh, helping them with, behind the county to deal with, and we've, we've got West Union Street, and we've got Longwood Hill, so we're gonna have coverage, plenty. Um, so the, the thirty seven thousand dollars there in bridge repairs. As the board most very familiar last year, which was a, a sub-halt line, um, a couple of items that we have budgeted in the O thirteen that I would actually like to do this year. One is ten thousand dollars to repair the roof or replace the roof on the D P W admin building, if somehow he's in the, I didn't think of it. Um, another item is, oh, uh, in solid waste, this is not a big item, but it's an item nonetheless, in solid waste under maintenance supplies equipment. In solid waste under maintenance supplies equipment, we had added four thousand dollars to reline the traffic on that, um, infrastructure.
It's a place.
Um, these guys have some problems with our things, so Mark can.
In the effort to do the job, or?
No.
The reason for the repairs.
The reason for the repairs, so the mechanics took it upon themselves to come up with a plan and not work with it, it was annoying. Uh, it came over the radar, so they let's read it back to the shop, put it back together, and it came back online this morning. So, kudos to the, the mechanics from the shop, that who the hell is came to manage to get that done. So the four thousand dollars there. And the final item that I look at, again, but it has a couple to me as a problem. That is the traffic light repair line. I added eighteen thousand dollars to replace the controller down at Taylor's Gym Section. Uh, that's an older controller, it's the only controller that has not been upgraded to match all the rest of the controllers. Um, I grew, um, you got, I got money to get that replaced anytime now, you can order it and get it done before we do.
What was that budget, what was that amount?
It's in the line, uh, four three one oh one, four five two four five.
Eighteen thousand?
As well as.
Spoke eighteen from ten thousand.
And thirty seven five.
Hey, I just wanna relay the sentiments of several members of the budget committee that, um, I guess are concerned about use of excess funds from the salt line. They have dated it briefly, they had a savvy budget, they've funded, and, uh, pretty much from year to year, they try not to screw with that line too much because they understand that it could be under, overspent. But there's also some sort, they also believe that there is a trust between our board, you, and, and the budget committee, and that if money is fault line, then it is a deep concern. So I just wanted to relay that because I'd hate to see them come back and then all of a sudden say, well, Carl, you know, you only spent a hundred fifty thousand installed this year, and then the rest, I see that you, you bought other things, and the board condoned it, so we're only giving you a hundred fifty thousand for next year. And I'd rather not throw it out personally, and, um, just to be truthful, as you mean, they're all taken, you know, moderately bad winter, and that fault line will be overspent. So, I'd rather not take money from fault line.
We're, we're talking about using those amounts of money out of this year's budget. Right ahead of those particular items. Do you like the fault line in next year's budget is still what it is? Not reducing that, I mean, that's, that's.
That was your point. I'm trying to emphasize is that, for the most part, the budget committee have stayed true to the fault line. And it's budgeted, uh, last year's budgeted a hundred ninety thousand dollars, and year to date, we've only spent seventy five. So, I just would prefer not to, you know, never let that be much. And I don't wanna go, but I would prefer to, before the budget committee, uh, we don't have to have their concerns, but it would be very much a courtesy.
Back to the concept of this.
Bottom line budgeting, and I understand that, but by the same token, bottom line budgeting and staying true to some of your lines, especially the fault line, it is really a tough fact. That is true to be, uh, definitely, and I don't want.
Yeah, well, I mean, Scott has a point, and the point being is traditionally we use three years of, uh, hindsight, uh, to project, you know, the average, to project the, the future budget. And, uh, so thinking as you have that, you are, you are affecting that, that number that you're using for the projection, and, and Scott has, has what I feel is a legitimate point. And I guess the question though that I have, when I was taking a notice from a caller saying, uh, I, I look at, I have thirty seven in service to repair.
His, his request is up thirty seven dollars.
All right, maybe I misunderstood, but I guess then.
All of those four projects are in this year's budget. I think it's actually, it could be removed if they were, well, second with my lines of money that might not be spent this year.
Okay, but I would ask, and the things, but I guess I'm not clear as to the, the amount that we have, that we need to, that we could possibly do, and the amount that we have to work with, let's say, without surplus on the salt line. If we had it, then I'd be, I'd be present and for what it does.
Keep in mind that the board's already authorized our fifty three thousand on match for the media project on that surplus salt line, so we've already tapped it. Um, I did very rough comparisons on just what our swing track is now, and what's special is that line, other things, and I do it now, like we would be heading down the road of having about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars left at year end. Um, that's a hard number to nail down, 'cause what happens in December, you know, a lot of overtime, a lot of storms, who knows? But if you just look at what we've spent in the first ten, continues to be, I was going to say about fifty something thousand of that is in the salt line. So it's, you know, there's, there's, it's not even half, the salt line is not quite half of what I see there.
The point that I just wanna make with, with the budget committee, yes, I'm the one who had the meeting, they might do, but they're, they're, budget committee wants to do the budget, yes, they do look at our budget as a starting point. But I truly believe and always have that, that, that working with the budget committee is a partnership. And I'm not adverse to having these discussions here, but, uh, but if we want to go down that road, I would like to give the budget committee the opportunity to weigh in and get their opinion. And we have the bottom line of ten, but a lot better if we rent that loud, um, and had a discussion with them before we just took the unilateral action. I think it's good for that type of collective decision making and partnership that is critical, and I just would like to keep that relationship going.
I agree, I think we should make, but our dilemma is, and ask for their, their feedback on where, where we ought to go, and I think that's a good idea. So, uh. What I'm hearing, and we need to have that right now.
Yeah, that's correct. But two of the four items.
Carl, what I'm hearing, both objects in the thirteen.
I think two, right?
I'm hearing, yeah, can you repeat that? If, if Alex gave two of them.
Well, the bridge, the bridge is already a feature year.
Right.
That's just the E back to thirty seven thousand, not related to salt budget though.
The, the roof, and the, um, and the.
So, we can take two items out of the two that.
Right, that would be the bridge, both there and the, and the, and the, uh, fall, fall bridge, right. I'd like to make a motion that we do that.
So that's forty one thousand.
No. Yeah.
Three thirty seven thousand followed with a crash impact.
Motion for six, thirty seven thousand out of DPW's budget for twenty thirteen.
Thirty one.
Forty, forty one thousand, thank you.
That was a favor.
Okay, Carl, I presume. And the other items, um, I believe that we could then have discussions, I mean, with the budget committee about potential use of that. The other thing I wanted to make note of is that there are two things in which you have a big complaint in your budget. One of them is the seven dollars for this holiday, not particularly in the DPW line, that's something that.
We have budgeted as a non-cash revenue.
In two thousand thirteen.
Yes.
But in two thousand and twelve, we're gonna be getting a payment in November, December.
Correct.
Right, so that is monies that we did not anticipate, like the whole.
But that doesn't increase your appropriation.
I understand it doesn't increase the appropriation, but it gives you more play in your balance of your total net budget at the end of the year.
It does, but how many do you spend it from?
Right.
Because it's not.
Right, but in the explanation that you're providing to the budget, unless that is a model, 'cause even if you spend sixty five thousand dollars on a fault line, it is gonna be neutral because there's sixty five thousand dollars of unanticipated money that's coming back to us. And we're trying to, I mean, I'm just saying, these are.
When you use the word unanticipated money that has a legal connotation on public sector, and it's your business, and then we still have our, our appropriation. This does not increase, a holiday does not increase our appropriation.
I understand, but it does.
I, I understand what you're saying.
I just wanna make sure it's clear, people might be listening, it does give us some flexibility in spending down or.
Or to do these two things.
It does, I'm, you know, supposedly, because all what we're trying to do is to try to accomplish tasks, do repairs that are needed, et cetera, that we know we have to do, whether it be this year, next year, the year after, it has to get done, and we're just trying to balance things out. That's, that's all, that's all I'm trying to. Mr. Jeff, the library, I, I give the three bigger departments, I mean, do we want to maybe look at library, look at parks in Iraq especially, you know, this way those folks can, if we do have any questions, would I make a motion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready to look at the other departments, 'cause I feel the discussion we're having right now, and other CP don't think the points. So I, I'd like to follow up and continue on the other departments. Which one do you wanna do first?
The library.
What's under tab?
That's very good.
The overall, um, library budget is, from what I'm seeing right now, the parkland's budget is seven hundred thousand, six twenty one, thirty six. Back in some eight years.
Seven hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah, seven hundred and eighty thousand. Seven hundred, seven hundred and eighty thousand, twenty one.
Last year was six, three, four.
Right, seven hundred and five thousand, eighty.
What do you want to do, figure it out, to make it, that's good. I want one more thing, so. I'm, I'm happy with it.
Thank you so much. Oh, yeah, library, uh, pretty.
What IP item? I shouldn't, yeah. There's a CIP item for exterior building repairs, like that has been.
Yeah, the.
What care did we prepare in, uh, ABC? CIP, hold on.
That was a CIP.
Ninety, thirty eight.
Yeah, fine.
Would, would one of you like to tell us about the urgency of doing the exterior repairs? So the plate comes at a table then. All right, hello.
Um, the library trustee recognizes the dominance of the salt line, they're trying to bring things, uh, up. So I am not here to argue, uh, critical urgency, but I would argue that next year will be the time to check the stuff, to estimate and give us, um, more solid numbers so that we can come to a conclusion. My fear is the number we've given you is too low to start with, and I'd rather not start the project and find out what we need, another fifteen thousand, and find ourselves in a deeper holding area. So, um, if only that are, um, given due consideration, next year at the F P time, that it would be enough budget. I may not be speaking Diane's lectures, but I think I'm speaking rationally.
Yeah, I, I thought it passed out there, the, um, born day, uh, is the library.
That's what I meant.
Okay, I, I did not know, but, um, no doubt, uh, it concerned me when we chatted because I know what we did at Casimir, and, and these things cost more to the air and the planes just, so, you know, so.
And we have water coming in through the, the addition around the elevator room, gives me great concern. Uh, we have asked people to look at this, tell us, but to give you the level urgency, and they haven't given a, the second.
This is a, this is a youth thing issue or something?
A lot, lot in addition, because water comes into that room, which has a, um, basic.
Is that, is that something you can do a temporary type of repair on? Just take, I mean, it's not gonna look all that great, but.
I don't know.
The urgency in this budget would have to be twenty thirteen, so before, before, um, the maintenance line.
He can't come back.
Yeah.
On the temporary fix, the stuff, the water.
Can something, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is that should money be in your budget for next year, that you can do a temporary type of repair? Because, I mean, a couple of thousand dollars of temporary repair might prevent long, you know, significant damage, you know, for the right, if it's coming in, be high in pocket.
Yeah, well, we tried to get the other contractors in, we haven't gotten those numbers after nagging them for coming in. Um, and we don't have enough flesh in our budget to be able to put anything forward to take.
I, I think that as far as the fact that there's a population, et cetera, there are needs. Couple of years ago, we had a problem with our pools, and we had to ship some things around to get the pool fixed. Um, I can't speak for our board next year, um, can't speak for anybody else here, but I would think that if you had some sort of a situation where you had to, to spend money and you didn't have in your budget, but it's saying that was cool, and try to find it, to money, to area, fix something, I mean.
And we, and we felt confident that you would as well, especially when technically you own the building, and we are the custodians there too. But we don't have anything to bring to it for it right now.
But you're saying though that, you think it's prudent, or if we, as a board, were to remove the twenty eight thousand dollars, what you're, what you have said, I mean, if you consider it a strict number, in fact, do you understand, if this board understands, or the future board understands, that it's a critical repair.
At that point, it would be. I would, you would want to see the CIP money this year, we don't expect it, I don't think, to be honest.
We'll have to be, be conscientious and support you, future board members will support you as best they can, and, and do that, appear in the following year's budget. If you want, you want eight money in, I would, I this year's budget is not twenty eight, you want four, five, eight to do an emergency repair?
Well, I mean, I think so. It may need to be something, right?
And this is.
What I'm hearing is that this could be something that is announced.
And, and we would be dealing with it now if we hadn't already dealt with the chin.
Scott had a comment from you.
I understand it would come from another, it would be an instrument, we notify the budget committee, the line is set, the library took the money, we can leave the department, three thousand dollar temporary.
Pretty minimal, I think.
And I, that, that's a this year, I know, that is not a next year budget, that's a, that's a now. You're, you're going into, so I'm, you know, bad weather season, you don't wanna screw around with us.
How, how can we do that when we have no idea what the cost of these temporary repairs might be?
But I think that by we, I grow bearish, we need to ship situations from there from eighth.
And if, and if we had a prayer that, that that was a viable conversation, I'd be calling, I'll get the answers.
All right, let's get an answer.
So in the meantime, it sounds like this will not be in the two thousand thirteen, is that what I'm hearing?
I'm making my category, please.
I'm hearing the trustees and, and the library director will get, will work with Dave, go bears, to get us some sort of an estimate on what it's gonna take to temporarily fix the situation with the leaking that you're having in that, in that elevator shaft position, so that we can get it fixed, and I'll have to hear the money from other department. That sounds fair, is that, is that a recap, I don't know.
I'm sure they're all enough.
Yeah.
True. That's, uh, thank you, sir.
I know the scheme, you mean that we have to take a vote to remove it from, or no?
People have to can. Parks and Rec, um, latest numbers.
You two, you two in the uniform, can we put a call in to who's that?
Four thirty four, three oh one, which is an increase over this year's budget of ten thousand, eight oh two.
Is that a between these, um, board members?
Yes. All of the, all of the major operating budgets is showing changes.
Any concerns from the board members? I don't know. Otherwise, it stands as it's been submitted.
I would like to make one point before you go further with that. Um, in, uh, the rec equipment line, we have seventy ones in there, and below significant dollars of that fund, that actually would be used out of the revolving fund. So we could take sixty-two hundred dollars out of that line, which would make it nine hundred dollars. Uh, it is, um, four five two oh one dash sixty-seven one hundred.
The last one, what I.
How much sixteen, sixteen two hundred? So you're in your presentation, you said that forty-four hundred was, was for, uh, basketball hoops, I think?
Yeah.
Right, and then, so that, was it added to that project that you're going to be doing?
Yeah.
Do you use the revolving fund to do that, or you will use the revolving?
We will, it's already been allocated.
Okay. That line to nine hundred.
Sixty-seven one hundred or sixty-six one hundred?
Sixty-seven one hundred, the very last item in the budget, last line. Budget is seventy-one hundred right now, he wants to reduce it by sixty-two hundred, which makes it nine hundred.
I was looking at the wall, look, I put a number, that's, actually. And, and, you know, other department heads came in here, was there anything that was in this year's budget, that you had, where we could do it to share in the issue's budget as a. Because this is usually pretty tight anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Rick. Who won the coin toss? Might be the longest discussion.
This is a coin though, but I'm just going to say, double-headed coin.
Here we start. Um, looking at, looking at, uh, this chart, fifteen years' budget, uh, as you can see that we're, we're tracking down to the year. Um, in fact, I'm, I'm looking very closely at the bottom line to make sure that we don't go over. However, though, there's a, however, um, there is anticipated revenue, uh, because we took advantage of the state grant-funded strange organizations here. We anticipate that approximately twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, will be coming back to the town, um, before the end of the year for the state. Uh, the other budget I got to see in a few, uh, quarters, every year, what we do is we budget for approximately eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars per year for, for, uh, the child year in the, in the, in the safety vehicle, firefighters. Uh, and that's, the lifespan of, of, of our fire suits, uh, spans ten years, because we've been told that every year. Uh, the cost of the suit nowadays, uh, could read ensemble for, uh, for boots, um, so pants is about eighteen hundred dollar range. Uh, so with that said, uh, we budget, we budgeted for next year, uh, eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars. Totally, this is what, um, we account for, for the use, some of that, uh, unanticipated revenue, coming in from the training grant, uh, that we could possibly zero out that, that line for one year, um, for the eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, again, that's just thinking outside the box a little bit. Um, I'm not sure if I can do.
I, I consider like if, um, that the, you know, conditions, if we, that's money, I may or may not appear.
Oh, my, my, my concern is that the state, for some reason, didn't, um, get it to the town before the general, the general line, but the revenue for that, for this, um, this, this revenue is coming in, uh, so far, we have received two checks so far from the state, and we anticipate, uh, at least ten, ten more, uh, so we're going for that twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, so the money's coming, it's just, uh, I, I can say that. So I just, we're under no pressure to cut a check in December. Just, just not worried about, I don't so much, just worried about.
And that check is reimbursement for what you already extended for their time?
Yeah, yeah, well, well, the time first, for example, the reason why, uh, my bottom line is the type is the fact that, uh, we had the real time, we had duty to pay up front for, for the personnel taking the training. The training was at no cost to us, but it was well worth, well worth it. Um, we, otherwise, we would have to pay for training and pay for the time and, and effort to do that. Um, it's just, it's just a little idea to put out there, um, to see if you realize that, um, money go through a, um, revenue for this year and, and.
I support the latter. Any other comments, concerns, discussion on that?
My concern was this is an annual expense, you'd be, I heard, it's not something special, and I would hate that with the night, because you can be.
And that's a deficit gets confusing where you say, you know, somebody's coming new onto the, into the squad or the budget committee, and they see, uh, a zero appropriation from for two thousand thirteen, and then I'm asking for nineteen thousand dollars next, the following budget season, uh, they're going.
How's it going back?
Thank you.
Amazing. Love you too. The other comment I would, um.
Let's move on to the, the big elephant in the room.
No, the three. I believe you can eat carrots, love it. Okay. Uh, I think you know what I mean.
This is, the, the several things that's done on CFE from the fire department that was proposed, uh, I'll tell you the smaller, smaller one, uh, the replacement of the forty-four ninety fifty Jeep, uh, it's currently out of service, uh, for mechanical reasons, uh, we're unable to use it on, on the storm, we, we hope to get it fixed in the near future. But again, it's a, it's a prime example of, of the reliability of that vehicle, and why it's, why it's important you get it replaced. We do have a, uh, a grant application to a vehicle, uh, we're waiting for response grant now, uh, the next couple of months, uh, but it is compared with grants, um, and there's no, there's no guarantees, um, but we, we're hopeful. Um, since the storm hit, uh, pretty much, uh, very well, they managed the grant, I'm not sure, uh, when we'll hear that from you. Two, uh, preserved fire, preserved plan, seven two thousand eight, and, uh, it was quite successful for us, and we want to, uh, knowing that we have, we have some apparatus that, that, that needs to be replaced in the near future, in the next, uh, two to three years, uh, they're supporting to, to revive that, uh, CLF, so, so ask for, uh, fifty thousand to help, uh, to help it back to that, uh, fund. And then lastly, uh, the, the fire station improvement program, uh, again, this is a, a year-long approach, uh, using, uh, a, a special committee, uh, as, as, as drafted up by, by this board, uh, the committee that double times, and so they, uh, very, yeah, looking at all three stations needed, uh, either renovations or an addition, uh, at some, at some magnitude, uh, to get all of the, uh, three stations that are aging and, and pretty much, um, gone beyond their functional abilities, uh, and space needs for a cord, but, uh, thank that, is million and three thousand. There's no.
Those were the three items, or?
Those are three items.
The amount on the forestry truck was?
Hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Currently in your calculation, that was sent to you, none of these items were removed.
Well, the.
Well, no, the forestry was in the CIP.
Foresty was in the CIP, yeah.
The, uh, fire station because of the bond, and the CLF because of the non-mapping fund would be special.
With the forestry truck in there with it offsetting revenue? That was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar expense.
Right, only about eight, seven, nine.
Please, after the first of the year, knowing the storm had interrupted the, the work process, uh, with that particular grant, if we were successful, we would have to come up with a five-year cash, cash match, actually six thousand dollars.
All right, five thousand dollar forestry vehicle, if it were to remain in our budget, then our budget is the same, you know, it's the same number, but if it were to be removed, then it would reduce our fee, our, our total budget by a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, the, the.
On-hedged it, and it was not in the flood.
Okay, it didn't need the A.
Category.
Want to move it into the funded A category?
I would like to.
If we want a, a ten match.
Probably have less than your summer reserve fund now, about five thousand?
Probably less than that now, um, but with what we have remaining in the capital reserve fund, and for us, any, any funds remaining in the budget, uh, for, for this fiscal year should be even equal.
So the exist capital is matured, if the forestry truck were to be substantially paid for their grant, we would tap the funds, the fund reserve.
Gee, how much do you have an impact rate for public safety? I know the public safety is broad, it's the both departments, and I know there was a plan to use that, um, certification direction, but the other.
It looks it was approximately fifty, fifty thousand that was in it.
And isn't it scheduled to expire next year if they don't use it?
I'd have to confirm that with planning, to find out where, where we're at with that.
We just got an email in a couple of months, so they'll write those, although, I mean, but seriously, any of those spreadsheets is stated when they expire.
I don't know if that was in it though.
Yeah, public safety, one of them, yeah. I'd be sure if I'm looking that up.
I thought that, um, we had to share standard.
Um, it was a thousand four, six, and it's, uh, he just listed this to be assigned to that program.
He assigned to what program?
To that fire station improvement program.
Right, but if that's not, but you didn't say.
Well, he may have done that because it's expiring, so.
I think so.
I shouldn't have filled, planted around the forestry truck. Did we, I'm, I don't really intend to hear if we, how to handle that.
Again, difficult, because we're in such a difficult budget crunch, but I, I, but I'm hoping to pray that our anti, for the next budget.
Yeah, three, okay, I'm sure.
But then the match, you, you have to be in the market in the part here.
We'll proceed with the, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand for capital reserves.
I, I'd want to prefer on some of these special factors, uh, just about having some conversations. I don't want to, you know, I don't really go to them and say, we did X, Y, and Z, so, and hopefully that same courtesy will be, will be given to us, so.
Because we, and sure, we have, we have quite a lot of time before we make decisions on.
So I, I would hope that they can then, you know, because I want to. And the thing I said, I know that has an impact on us on the whole, on the road program thing, but I think we should have the dialogue about the, the fire station improvement plan, um, but if we were, you know, you know, kind of spot what we'd be in, if we didn't tell the school that we'd be having discussions with, if we all, oh, Monica, for the forest fund, it's, it's, we don't have to get second thoughts on it, but at least we should have some dialogue with them before we, so actual votes.
Well, I agree absolutely, we started down that road, and we ought to continue down that road. And I, I like the conclusions out of the fire station improvement, and those kinds are going to be next year, survivable the year after that, but it's something, I think the board, the board made a good point earlier, I was saying, that price doesn't go down, it, it just, it, it just, yes, it builds over time, and that's going to figure out. So if it's not, your point is, it's not, maybe, just to, on the, the, the bottom line there, unfortunately, something like that.
The other problem I'm going to make is that, we've seen a lot of the economy, we say it's the new normal, you know, and I'm not saying that ten years ago, even five years ago was, was the normal then, but it is, I think it is a little bit different. Where we were kind of banking on, you know, two and growth in valuation, that's the new normal, if we half percent, plus ten, um, so the things that we could afford in ten years ago with two and, two and a half percent increases in valuation are going to be less, I think it would be challenging to try to, to accomplish. One thing that I learned, because I used to be on the school board, and we had quite a huge difficulty to, 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 and less than that, when, for that big, you know, tax on, you know, additions to the prior year, the voters kept giving you a default, and, uh, you know, I credit a guy named John Stasro, where, you know, they take, take a smaller bite, it's this apple, and sure enough, when it was a couple hundred thousand dollars more, and you're stressed here, and then you kind of incrementally did it, I know that we need to be at, well, no relief, but it takes, it takes a lot of facts, if you try to do it so quickly, a lot of times it backfires. So I'm, I am a little bit nervous about saying, yeah, we really need the roads, so we're willing to go seven hundred fifty thousand more than what I was saying was last year, I'd rather take a more measured approach, where we'll get there, get back there, and I take five, seven years, we just want to.
But what I think, if you take what you're saying, and you try to put it on paper mathematically, it doesn't work, that's the problem, or that's the concern, because what you, when you go out and, and you take trajectory to fires after February, the, 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 the wear on the roads, the way they go, you, 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 you can't hitch up to something that's moving away exponentially unless you're doing it exponentially, and, and we can't do it exponentially, so.
Well, it's a very expensive trail, you know, so that's why we probably do not.
Maybe you need your trails instead of roads. You had an article pass.
Last year, we're getting a road, so trail. So, you, benefit of, uh, somebody's bottom line of fifty, ten, I'll get it, I ended up, made it down to four, oh, two point.
Five hundred, there's two million, four hundred ninety-five thousand, four hundred ninety-four dollars, just rounding up.
Right, so, and that looks to be about the increase of hundred and eleven. And of that, of the, so you already have almost a hundred and eleven thousand dollar increase in this budget, um, which is about five percent.
And thirty-eight thousand, thirty-nine thousand is return.
Is retirement related. So we're going to, it's got an over-expended overtime line, right? Or, or probably will, but.
It's over-spent now.
It's over-spent right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the two-thirds of, of that increase, that hundred and eleven thousand, is going in the personnel.
Yeah, thirty-five thousand, thirty-nine thousand.
What, are we certain that we're going to get to twenty-five thousand dollars?
For, for what?
For, for the training grant?
Training?
Yeah.
You see part of it already?
And this is the dialogue that I want to have with the budget committee to say, okay, we've got twenty-five thousand dollars, which we run through, I'm going to get, you know, I mean, from adding these, whether or not these monies get spent on, I, I, I think what we need to try to do is to say, okay, what can we get accomplished next year with the monies that are from this year? And again, not maybe going after, maybe it's not in the fire department, maybe it's another, another department, but, um, I do feel, I hear what you said, you kind of, you overspent some of these, you, you put money into overtime, but you wouldn't, or not already have done, because you knew you're getting twenty-five thousand dollars back, um, so that somehow maybe maybe it's left there, but I just, I think, think that, of course, is there, obviously, really nothing in here that's a one-time expense, right? And it's not like you're.
Since, uh, two thousand eight, uh, uh, operating budget's been, uh, pretty much a status quo by, by, by.
And I know one-time expenditures in your operating, is it?
The only thing, one-time expenditures, in, in, uh, this, we're budgeting to replace whatever cardiac monitors and, and, uh, thirty thousand dollars, but again, but that's not, that's a special regimen fund.
Right.
You know, it doesn't affect the capacity, so it's not a good example.
Closing comments for the fire department budget. Director of Emergency Services, otherwise known as Chase Sullivan.
Well, we are both hands.
That was a look at that. It's, it's, you know, book is thicker than the fire department. There's a motorcycle.
They got me in, like, to see where they're going.
It's just that gone on.
You tell us the benefit of the long time at the E O C.
Two months ago.
The only project right now is at four million.
Four million. Four million, yeah.
Seven hundred forty five thousand, one hundred and sixty four dollars, which is an increase over the previous year of two hundred fifty five thousand dollars.
Now, are you just talking about operations?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make sure.
And according to that, two fifty, one thousand.
Well, you're very, like, labor department. Retirement, two thirty, two thousand one?
Ninety one thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars.
And that was, what?
Retirement was ninety one thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. Got increased up there personally.
Okay, um, I can start, back in mid September, I came before the board, um, Michelle Prevention has been supporting the research, I think, through the classes. They come up, so I manage several other, um, particular courses two weeks ago. And said, we would be interested if there was a class provided before the end of the year. So we'd be interested to see the numbers for the dates. We got a reply back, two thirteen, two hundred and fifty six, and just, um, to do that out of this, but a thousand dollars, it's, it's not a lot, but something that I could take out of my, where you develop that money for next year.
That, that would be, um, communications and pre-development?
No, this would be out of the, uh, police, the, the, the.
A thousand dollars?
Let's come to the, the.
Did you set a price on the send off, sir?
First one's six, six. Take the thousand dollars off, it's just.
That, I guess, something like that, so before three six, but I'll make that mention, please, that one. Uh, three operations, uh, forty two one oh one, with dash forty four, three hundred and five thousand dollars.
Okay, now, your special, and that's actually this year's budget. Yeah? Those in favor? Uh, I, thank you, Chief. Think you're going to stop there? For your honor roll. That's what I have. They only get better, right? No, they don't get better. Um, I would look at the government's, um, position, um, before we take a hindsight off already.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the I N C, the two blue police cruisers, and then the, the. Okay, um, any comments on this?
I don't have any. With the, um, office, um, and just going through the handout that you, that you gave us, Chief, but, um, there were a couple of questions, the first one was on, on the page, it was your budget presentation, and it was the salary line. And it was a sixty nine, what, seventy eight, it was already a contractual obligation, but then they was looking to restore the janitorial position. Of the increase of sixty nine thousand, what amount, you know, what, uh, represented the janitor, any ballpark figure? And that's hours that we, that we have over there?
Because we, we use four hours of time.
And then I had to, there's a.
One day, but.
Glow burst, it's over, it's running down. You got a couple hours a day, uh.
Now, is that something that we're looking to just hire someone part time, or are you going to contract it out with a company or something?
Or hire a partner, that's on the path, um, to pass the decision as well.
Okay. So you basically, you're looking to reinstate.
Reinstate that position, correct.
And the other, okay, going on, um, the next page was overtime, forty hundred, not a lot of, because it was a vision for time, it's not over spending, but there's a, there's a change in that, in the, in the rate of pay. So, so it would also be, would there be any type of, um, do we, do we get any of that back, any, any revenues or, no, that's not, that's not detail really, is it?
That, this is everything that we got, you know, in the, we have one report. There's rates increase.
Right.
As you take that piece of pie away.
Right.
That payment just becomes taking bigger as we increase their pay. The piece of pie becomes bigger, you take it out of the overtime, and, and, and I wish, I continue, I think, while we're running this, all the numbers, and overtime expenditures, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we have, um, people taking overtime, and that's going to be, to be paid out at the end of the year. And the overtime's going to be exchanged at the end of the year payout.
Time for me to get on the jet with those. Um. And so the point, putting it out again now, still. Was there another, uh, vacation, were there any for time on that one?
Yes, there was, and I, I dropped it, it was twenty thousand off of that, that one.
So that's thirty five hour increase?
Yes.
Okay.
Forty six.
Okay.
Any comments on the freight department budget? We'll go forward as we've discussed.
Thank you, Chief, thank you.
Administration.
Admin, I don't, um, I hate to do it, we, we had decided to go forward with the, um, uh, peg coordinator, and we have that structured, but that's the reason for, like, most of the increase.
Mm-hmm.
In, um, admin.
So, so provide the high level amount that you could do over.
Sure, at the end total, we should, now, two million, three hundred eighty six thousand, five hundred twenty two dollars. That's an increase of one hundred nineteen thousand, five thirty eight.
That's how much you got, that tech coordinator was fifteen thousand, nineteen fifty seven?
Twenty seven. Uh, forty seven thousand, two hundred thirty three dollars over there last year.
Exclusive on the tag.
That's the total tag budget, is about forty seven thousand, three thirty three. Eighteen, I think that, three four seven zero last year, our retirement, three thousand, four hundred thirteen zero last year.
Add some sixty five, okay, one nine two.
You can't go over, I agree, but I, I think employees have a greater contribution, and helping, you know, us in terms of that, I think is prudent, and it will have, um, implications, not just this year, but implications ten years from now, if you make these changes now, so. One decent comment, that's a state, I think it's a body setting, but we can control that, what the contributions are.
So it should, uh, have enough discussion this evening for you to, 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 now, reflecting all these decisions?
I have an all here for you. Drive down beside the. Seven ten dollars and nine ten.
And the revenues can play havoc with that.
I did not add, and I don't know if someone had it in, um, for the twenty five thousand from the fire department. Will they, will they, right, right in the twenty five this year? All right, so that would go into next year's budget. Are you anticipating all of this coming in this year? So that would not impact it.
Just refresh my memory as to what bigger ticket items were part of the C I T portion of the town budget. I'll see the road program at one point five.
Okay, we have the road program at one point five, we don't have these, I'll, I'll consider that, right, because you have three seventy thousand.
Two percent, yeah.
We have a tractor truck, it's called, five hundred eighteen thousand.
P T W, yeah.
You have a Chevy pickup for ninety five thousand, one eighty. That's just vehicles. Anything else right now, I think, I don't know, I don't know, it's a very important special article.
So the total C I T is?
One, seven eight three, million. And in seventy three? Yes, only seven hundred eighty three thousand, two hundred eighty two dollars. As opposed to, which was three hundred twenty five, just one today.
Any comments on the budget discussion? We will, one more up at it next Monday, but then you said on the, by the fifth, so.
Yeah, we take, uh, a week to get all the data into the M A S program and print out all the reports.
Yeah, you can, you can, just a couple hours, but, yeah. And I, that's what the, to us in the whole, I saw this. In preparing a recommendation to bring to the board on agenda. Okay. Thank you for the board for three, three nights of discussion on our budget.
Just to be clear, and right now, on special articles, you have a total of the revolving, uh, oh, special detail revolving fund should be in here too.
Police department.
Mm-hmm. Public works, collect bargaining agreement, we have placeholder for thousands, yes. We have nothing in from mil foil, but you remember last year, there was a special article from mil foil. That's the new three thousand, and then you have those four items that you're using fund balance and other revenues to offset, and that was finance, software, I M C software, COVID and folks, yeah, and Root one fourteen thirteen, especially.
I, uh, you brought up the mil foil, situation, I'm being bad, and that, it's similar to, uh, we expect to refresh the painted lines on the road every year. Which, and, uh, it's just part of running the road infrastructure, and if you want viable, like, for recreation, do sure, it's, we're going to have to think away. Species, and, uh, two, three, three ponds, as we've covered this, often time, we, three ponds. And, but that leads, rather than special articles, that means it becomes part of the budget, and it never just went part of the budget.
Oh.
Yeah, well, I was, I got, uh, rehash old stuff. But couple of years ago, there was a discussion about you just be, you know, from that conservation fund for, um, you take land, and I know that basically was a, because, um, say, definitely for land, so, or an article, you couldn't use it for mil foil, but then maybe dialogue with conservation to say, okay, up to three percent or five percent for something where we could budget, you know, five thousand dollars a year or something to, to address mil foil. Now, I, I have a lot of, you know, I think, I'm not that knowledgeable about current use, you know, land use change taxes, and does it have to be earmarked towards land? Or can it be used for just natural resources? I don't know that.
Taking on a classification fund, like the way the article's written, it really.
It's usually land, right?
But if you didn't get you to enter into the base of classification, about one article could change the purpose of that fund.
I'm not sure I agree with that.
They have.
To me, it's, excuse me, as much economic development issue as anything else, because of the river and the resources that brings economic benefits, you know, yeah. And I'm not comfortable with going and tapping other dedicated funds to address something that really is related, in my opinion, to economic development in downtown. If it wasn't for the river and the resources that brings to us, we would be losing a lot of economic charges. That's not initially, I think, to, to use this.
I was going to suggest, though, if you were going to budget again for two thousand, I want to do a special article, I think it is an ongoing expense, and I think you should add two thousand to the Conservation Commission budget and let them oversee it, uh, because it is a natural resource.
I think that's an option, most importantly. I think it's not going to operate, right?
I, I support the bottom line to put it in the, in just an annual expense of the operating.
Where else would it be appropriate, other than?
Please, complete the last one. Does that mean he needs scuba gear? Make, make another program. Well, you know what, if we have kids funded, funded, revolving fund is a program.
And it's both of them operating.
And that doesn't mean you pull it out from one lake and put it into another. You need to have a rule from the library, too.
Well, uh, kidding aside, I'd, I'd, I'd have to proceed on something, I'd be happy to bring up the Conservation Commission at the next meeting as a topic of discussion. The time is, or should be before, since then.
I've just wanted to add two thousand to the budget somewhere, for cost duration, or back to record, wherever, but I provide.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, okay. And I think we have, we have discussions, but, 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 but it's an ongoing expense.
I think the conservation, I think we should have a, just be a change.
That's motion based on.
I'll, I'll make it, I'll make it, I'll make it.
So, feel free to ask.
Bill's margin, Scott's second is, those in favor, and you can say, nice.
Uh, hi.
Hi, Joe. Moving up, we're moving out of budget deliberations, committee reports. That's the district.
Yeah, you would have to listen. Yeah, she, she didn't leave last week. Yeah, it was, uh, oh, you guys, you guys, uh, also, uh, uh, contract on the. Top of the stack, yeah. Uh, also, there was, uh, uh, discussion on the, uh, roadside method of beautification, uh, the, and the, uh, had a discussion that was unanimously in, that the, uh, proposed beautification thing was specifically exempt from the certificate appropriateness, and that specifically under sections thirteen point four point five one and thirteen point four point five eight, uh, a common, uh, proposed work is appropriate, provided does not interfere with the, uh, D P W memorial located in the, uh, in the area. Uh, there was, uh, uh, discussion about the, uh, historic market grant that's going to the, on a.